Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education Business Meeting of March 21st, 2019. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to go briefly out of order. We will try very hard not to sing Yellow Brick Road up here, but we all just saw the elementary school play, which is this weekend. We got to see the rehearsal. Go. Whether you have third and fourth graders, it is a treat, but I will try not to sing the rest of the meeting. Okay. Our first order business, I'd like to resolve to approve the minutes of the work session business meeting of March 7th, 2019.
Second?
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we're just going to move right into presentations. Dr. Wells?
So we're going to start with the science research program. Mr. Zupan is the teacher and advisor. And on Saturday, this past Saturday, at Sleepy Hollow High School was the WSEF, the Westchester Science Research Exhibit, with over 648 student exhibits from across the entire region. And we were so proud to have 12 of our students there and many award winners who really impressed all of us. But every one of our students had incredible, an incredible presentation. And this really puts Putnam Valley where we belong with the best of our academic institutions in our region. So we're very, very proud of you for representing us at that exhibit. And I know Mr. Zupan has a presentation.
Yeah, thank you very much. We were very lucky in our program. We started out, just kind of a little history, we started with five members back in 2014, '15, '17, and then it slowly started growing from there to 17, to 34. This year, we have 40 members in our program, which is great. This is actually taken in our, right before holiday break, we had a little gift exchange, and a lot of them had themed projects based on either something they did or something that they're researching. So for example, like Dora had a solar system bracelet. Chris, who's a professional arm wrestler, had an arm, a 3D-printed arm and with a matching T-shirt. And it was just great to see them all get together. And then next year, we have already, we have another 19 students signed up. So between graduation and that, our program's going to add another dozen, if not more than that, students. So we'll have about 50 to 60 students in the program, which is great. For those that don't know, the program kind of starts sophomore year with a self-selected topic. They get to pick whatever they want to research. They become fluent enough to find a mentor. So this picture right here is Devin, who's working at Hunter College over the summer. His mentor just discovered a brand-new species of hominid. It's an ancestral species of the human. He's actually showing him different casts of different, like orangutans and gorillas. That's what you kind of see in the forefront of the picture. And we got to hold a seven-to-10-million-year-old fossil. I was giddy. It was great. And it's actually funny that his mother is a dental hygienist and his research is in teeth. So she was able to help him a lot with that. And so right now, a lot of the sophomores that have mentors and juniors and seniors mentors are now developing a research, professional research plan to then design and do their original project. Throughout this whole thing, we have a lot of checks and balances. So we have Jedis, for those, I mean, anyone who doesn't know me, I'm a huge Star Wars fan. So the juniors and seniors are Jedis and the sophomores are Padawans. And they have to meet every two weeks before they meet with me. And it helps the sophomores learning what they need to get done and what they need to do and kind of learn from the juniors and seniors' experience. And they meet with me one-on-one on an additional period to class to go over their own individual goals going forward. And then junior and senior year, they're competing and they're completing original experiment, writing a graduate-level paper, hopefully trying to get published, and then competing like we had this past weekend at WSEF. And there's a lot of competitions throughout the year. And then they plan out, right now, we're actually, we kind of hit the ball running and we just keep going. And now they're planning for senior year already, playing out their second experiment. And then again, they'll try for publication with that, if not, competing in other competitions. So it's an amazing program that, again, we learned from Dr. Wells coming here going, "Why isn't this here?" And I went, "I have no idea what you're talking about." And then she brought in the science research teacher from Horace Greeley. And, I'm sorry. Sorry. Right. And then it was just, immediately we saw this and said, "We need to have this here." So we have mentors from all over the place. We have, they can be as, you know, as far as, our farthest one so far to date is Australia. That's actually Skyping with one of our sophomores. And they're doing a survey experiment, so distance isn't a problem. It's amazing with technology. We have some local ones. We have some local parents that are mentors. And then we have other programs all over the tri-state area. And so it's really amazing that these students, again, they get to self-select so that we didn't try to find a mentor, someone professional in their field, to help them complete that research. And so since I last came up here, we had Genius Olympiad for last year, because it happens during Regents Week, and we had Sarah Getzke and Caitlin Cohen, who's also a senior, again, honorable mention. Our sophomores who are competing this year, we had 19 competing last year and 12 win, which was the highest percentage of all schools that were competing there. And it's always funny when you see all the scientists who kind of use this as a litmus test and we're like, "Oh, God, this is going to be hard to compete against." And it's really, it is really great to see PV kind of really growing. Another thing that kind of put us on the map this year was Dora's research on habitable planets. And she's my, like, I always see this like Big Bang kind of calculations in our board, in our dry erase board. That's her. It's definitely not me. And she was an STS semifinalist. So what that means is she was one of the top 300 projects out of 200, let's try that again. She was one of the top 300 projects out of 2,000 that applied throughout the entire United States. And STS is one of the oldest research competitions. You're only allowed to apply as a senior, and it's actually 16 different essays plus your paper. And then if you are a semifinalist, you're the top 300. And so she was awarded a $2,000 scholarship for that and actually also a $2,000 grant that is coming to PV. So it's a really amazing program just to be a semifinalist. And she's our first one in school history to do that. So what, again, kind of, it was really interesting to hear, I guess, it's one of those things where, you know, I've been here for 13 years, so I'm kind of used to it, is the support that I have for this program along with all the programs here. And, you know, for example, we found out she was a semifinalist and the next day, that was up on the ticker on the main screen. And I showed this and kind of shared this with a lot of other research teachers in neighboring districts, and they were like, "We don't have that. Like, we don't have, you know, a district that exemplifies the science accolades the same way they do sports." And it was really amazing. It was like, "Oh, that's really amazing." So it was really nice to see and to have that here. In January, we had JSHS. I know there's a lot of acronyms being thrown out. It was another competition that's way up in burnt hills. If, for those that don't know, JSHS is kind of the program run through Albany, which is where science research really comes from. And we had the second-most competitors of all schools, and that's just all the area, everything north of Westchester. So Westchester and Rockland have their own competition, kind of like sectionals, and the rest of New York State is our section. So we have students traveling from Elmira and Buffalo, LOA, and then us, you know, traveling five hours to get up to this competition. And this is our way to get into the state competition. So we had four winners. Again, that was also the second-most of all schools there regardless of size. Ritu got third, Kira also, received third in behavior. Marissa Back got second in animal science, and then Sarah got first in engineering. And so what's great about this is second and first place move on to the state level. So next week, we're all traveling up to SUNY Albany to go see Sarah and Marissa compete against the best of the best of Long Island, New York City, Westchester, and us, competing for the, now the national level. If they're any finalists, they'll be, will move on to the national level this, later on this summer. Like Dr. Wells said before, we had a lot of good students and presenting, and we had a couple of students win awards, which is amazing. Dora won. And a lot of these awards are like specialty awards based on your topic. So Dora won Sustainable Development Award, Karina's Research and Think Steam. Marissa Back won a Food Science Award. Ritu won the Ying Scholar Award, which was one of the big winners. He ended up taking home over $600 and a chance to win additional two grand in about two months against all the regional winners of this Ying Scholar Award for, the Ying Scholar Awards presented for public and community involvement and improvement. So his research on using YouTube as an educational tool for genetic counseling is going to be presented there. And then we also had some best-in-category, Michael Tompkins getting fourth in behavior, Sarah Broas getting second in engineering, and then Ritu getting first in behavior. And so to put that in perspective, out of the 650 that compete, only about 35% medal in best-in-category. To be first, you have to be in the top 5%. So there was over 150 projects in behavior. Ritu had to be one of those top five, top 10 projects. And then he, you know, he would have a shot to move on to the, being a, like a grand winner, a grand prize winner. So again, like just an amazing testament to their work. The big news is Genius Olympiad. We actually have 10, we had 12 students apply and 10 got in. This is international competition. There are only two international competitions. Both are here in the United States. One of them is Genius Olympiad, which is purely based on you submit your paper, and if you're one of the top projects, you move in, you move on. So we have 10 different students that all did original research. What you see here is them taking a picture with their grand product, their graduate-level 20-page paper that they're submitting for all these competitions. And they'll all be presenting during Regents Week. They'll spend half their time taking Regents exams at the neighboring high school, and then they'll quickly shoot over across the street to the SUNY Oswego where the competition is held, and then present their research against international researchers and presenters. So we have a lot to look forward to, which is really great. We have one more local competition, Dry County moving on. May 29th is our local symposium where all 40 of our students will be presenting their work. It's kind of like a year-in-review session. There's food, so that's always fun. It goes from 6:00 to 9:00. They'll be here, actually, it will start in the cafeteria, move up here, while you'll be using this space to present all 40 posters. And then we have, I'm big on photos, because I'm that kind of dad, and so we have little photo montages in the pack later on. And then in June, we'll have the sophomores will compete in Somers Science Fair. And we also, and then we have, right after that, then we have our 10 students moving on to Genius Olympiad. So again, we have a lot of things we look forward to. What I love about this program is hearing the alumni come back and being like, "Oh, yeah, I know how to read at a graduate level. I know how to write at a graduate level. I know how to be professional in an email, like not use emojis when I'm talking to someone." They know how to present professionally, and they know how to learn about time management and balancing everything. So I think those kind of, you know, we always try and instill that in every student, and this really pushes them to do that and helps them move on, learn perseverance to keep moving forward. So again, we're young, we're only about four or five years in, but we have students, like this is our last year's senior class, and they're constantly just moving on to college. But it's really great to hear them come back in that first semester where you see a lot of kids going like, "I can't do this. I can't keep up." These students don't have that problem. And it's really, that's always the best thing to see. So thank you to everybody, the parents, for listening countless times and for writing snacks, moving boards, the janitors. They let us stay there late and clean up after us, and it's really amazing. Our students here do so many different things, and it really is amazing to watch them. Like you'll see a lot of students coming in with, they're running in sweaty and running with, you know, softball uniforms on, and this uniform, and they go to plate practice, and they're still doing this original research on top of everything. Thank you to you guys, the Board of Ed, for allowing this to flourish here. We, I've been lucky that I have this support system, and it's always great to see that happen. And it's really one of the reasons why the program has done so well. To Dr. Intriary for her support, she's come and presented to us, and she's taken the kids' feedback for her dissertation, which was such an amazing thing for them to see, like somebody else presenting and having them to be like, "Oh, yeah, do this. You should change this. Here's how you animate this." And then have her come back later, like, "That was much better. It was really cool." And they were like excited to hear about how her dissertation went. They want to know how she competed. And then finally, obviously, the Dr. Wills for bringing this program here. Again, we never knew about it and five years ago, and now suddenly it's one of those things that's kind of, you know, people know about it now. I've had, the great thing to have is I'm full-time teaching this course. I don't teach freshmen anymore to be like, "Oh, you should join science research." It was so weird this year to have freshmen come up to me and go, "You're the science research teacher, right? How do I get into it?" And that's, that's always like an amazing thing this year. My TITAC is actually a decellularized leaf from Sarah's research that I want, so that, you know, that was given to me last year, and it was like such a, such a cool thing, part of that product. So again, thank you very much, but again, the day really should go to the students for all of their amazing work that they do. It makes it really easy to look good when they're all the ones putting in the hard work and doing it, so, which is why they're the pride in Putnam Valley for today, definitely. So, thank you. So we have Marissa Back. Oh, Francis, I'm sorry.
You know, I just cannot say enough about the role of a teacher in this program and in all our programs. Without the inspiration and the constant support and motivation of a teacher, these programs do not flourish. They only take root and flourish when we have a great teacher. And we are so very fortunate to have Mr. Zupan here. The kind of care he takes with the students, he's always there. It's really a community. You know, when you walk into their special room, you just have this really great sense of warmth, and, you know, they're working together, they're helping each other, they're enjoying themselves. That's very important to have fun, too, because they're working so hard, but they're also having fun with one another. This is really, really what makes humanity so special, is when we're in a common place, working on something together and feeling great about what we're doing, and we're doing something so worthwhile. So, you know, when you go in there, you feel a little bit jealous. I, you know, you want to have that. That's what we all seek, and it's due to Mr. Zupan, and he's a very special person. You know, Mr. Zupan is a genius. Now, why do I say that? Because I've gone to the variety shows, and I've seen he's incredible, incredible, unique, and different ways of looking at the world that he projects through his skits and his, you know, his great ideas. He is really a very special person, and that's what it takes to make this person, this program thrive. So I can't thank him enough for being a partner in this and making this happen. And it gives me such a thrill.
So these are the students who've competed in JSHS and/or will be competing in Genius later on this year, or WSEF. So Marissa Back. Shannon Lee. Chris Sauber. Trent Waykaser.
Trent's brother made the cutest scarecrow I've ever seen.
I don't know if Alex and Keiko got out of softball yet. Oh, so other students, sorry, that couldn't be here that are, might be still, probably is, we have Sarah Broas. Alex and Keiko Waters. Ritu Bonavallu. And Dora Rippon. Thank you again, guys.
I'd just like to say one quick thing. These aren't just scientists, they're educators. As I went through the exhibit, and even though I know some science, they took time to explain what their projects were and made sure I understood it. And one of the young scientists actually turned to me and says, "Mr. Cohen, you don't understand what I'm saying. Let me simplify it for you." And I so much appreciated what this person did, because they explained it in a way that I actually understood. And as people know, I went through and I took notes, you know, and it was just phenomenal. They're not just scientists, they're educators, and they taught. It was just beautiful.
I mean, there are judges there who are experts in the field and who question them on their, their projects. And they, they probe deeply to see whether the students really understand what their projects are about and what they mean and what the impact is of their work. It's, it's quite an amazing accomplishment that these students have achieved.
And I have to say, when you said five years, Mrs. Zupan, I, on one hand, I remember that first evening, and it didn't seem that long ago, but I can't imagine we ever didn't have it. It's such a fabric of the school at this point, and it really is such a sense of community. And forget the acronym, acronyms. You use words in your presentations, and I'm like, "I have to go look that up at the end of the day." So I'm so very, there's aren't enough words to say how very, very impressed we all are and how, if there's one, there are many things I'm proud about being on the board for the last nine years. This absolutely tops the list, seeing this. And again, I want to add my thanks to you and to Dr. Wells for bringing it and letting us be able to take credit for it, which is always fun. I do want to ask Mr. Lee, in the absence of Jeannie tonight, do you think you can take a picture of our science research people? So find an area.
Should we give them another clap?
Let the kids be in charge. They'll figure it out.
A few, a couple, actually, a couple of weeks ago, I was at the high school, and I was with Dr. Intriary, and I asked her about this esports. What is this esports club? And we had a presentation by two students who want to form a club, because Dr. Intriary asked me, would, could we support this? And I really did not know what it was about. And I asked the two students, who did such a professional job of presenting their work, I asked them to come to the board and present to the board so the board could see. This is something that's apparently happening in many school districts and other, and universities, these esports groups. So it's Luke Marinelli and Daniel Jurwitz, and they're going to, Jurwitz, and they're going to come up and present their request.
Hello, my name's Luke Marinelli, and I'm both freshmen here at Putnam Valley High School, and we'd like to present to you our proposition for our esports exhibit school. Why esports? Being a part of a team or organized group is an excellent opportunity to build communication and teamwork skills. Many games these days are promoting teamwork and communication throughout the games to help, to help you win and reach your common objective. Many students who participate in an esports team develop a passion for STEM subjects. This is due to the high technological involvement in the consoles or PCs that we're playing the games on. Numerous students in other schools who have an esports program have made many friends and have brought up any subpar grades just so they can participate. I know at this school, we have a rule where you cannot be failing more than two classes if you want to participate in any extracurricular activities. And many students who would be interested in this may have subpar grades that they would need to bring up, and they would, just because they're so interested in an opportunity like this. Being a part of an esports team increases an employee's interest in you when applying for a job. A recent study showed that 25% of 2,500 employers in different fields showed an increased interest in applicants who cited playing video games or developing video games as a hobby. Video games are a powerful way to get students interested in technology from an early age and teach them basic technical skills that will reap rewards down the road. Some people retain negative views about gamers, such as the assumption that they are socially inept. Yet in recent years, online multiplayer games that encourage players to form teams and strategize through online text or voice communication have grown in popularity.
Educational benefits. Esports builds an important school-to-home connection for students who otherwise have no extracurricular connection to school. They just go home. So students who aren't involved in the athletic component of sports and teams can still go home and feel like they're part of a team. Involvement in school-sponsored extracurricular activities lead to better student engagement, development, and learning. Esports is a way to reach more students and let them know that they matter. So kids who go home after school and they sit and they watch TV or they play these video games can be on a team and play with other people and talk to other people could almost give them more of a feeling of like they matter. And this can be tied to academic eligibility requirements to motivate students. So also with students bringing up subpar grades to be able to participate on this team. Scholarship and college opportunities. Students have many opportunities to win a scholarship or grant money. So when they progress in these tournaments, when they, when they win this money, it can go towards tuition or room and board funds. If our team of talented students can progress far enough into the tournament, there's a possibility to win pocket money, money in scholarships for the school, and also scholarships for college, also building on the point of being able to pay for tuition and room and board costs. Many colleges are offering scholarships for participation in a college-level esports program, similar to the traditional college sport scholarships. And we have a list of almost 80 colleges that are very interested in kids who participate in esports. Enhanced employability. Employers across a range of industries are embracing resumes that include backgrounds in making or playing video games, concluding that the digital pastime can help employees with online collaboration, problem-solving, and other critical workplace skills. Gamers are the kind of people, you give a set of instructions to them, and they'll just figure it out. In many games, you are given a problem and you need to find the solution with your team, and you need to find out the most efficient and effective way to solve that problem. So that builds real-life skills in quick thinking, problem-solving, and communication. In a 2017 survey by Robert Half Technology, 24% of more than 2,500 chief information officers said they were attracted to entry-level job candidates who cited playing or developing video games as a hobby. Information regarding this unique opportunity. We have established a lot of interest amongst the student body. We were only able to reach out to the freshman group alone, but we're confident that the interest will grow when it's expressed to the entire school. And Mr. Glenn, the special education teacher, has agreed to be our advisor for this team. All students would be welcome to participate in the club, however, only the top performers in our virtual trials would be representing the school in tournaments. We will create a schedule and figure out meeting times both in school and virtually. High school esports league information. The HSEL offers a variety of games, and some of the most popular AAA games on the market are beginning to adapt to the new type of gaming. We would screen the games to determine which games would be acceptable for the school team to compete in. Mr. Glenn would make that decision in the end, or potentially Dr. Intriary. Pricing. There's a $160 interest pass split up between students, around $15 per student. This is what we came down to with our, with our, like, interest in the freshman and student body. This $160 interest pass would give you the ability to play in regional and weekend tournaments for seven players. We'd have seven players' ability to have the ability to enter the roster for tournaments. We would get one sponsored LAN session per semester, which is when the HSEL basically brings all the students together in one place and have them play games together and really solidifies friendships and teamwork behind the gaming. We also get a partnered Twitch channel, which means viewers can subscribe for $5 a month, and the money will go directly into the club funds. This is a huge perk, as it usually takes months or even years of streaming games and building up a community to reach this level, and we get to just have it handed to us on a silver platter, basically. Is there any questions and concerns?
I think, so I think you started your presentation with gamers have the reputation of not being socially confident, and you two have blown that out of the water, just in your presentation skills and your detail. I need a translator, because I only understand about an eighth of what they're talking about. But we talk all the time that we're preparing our students for jobs, we don't know what they are yet. And this is an example of that. So is there any other questions? Any questions?
So explain to me again, so you would open it to anybody that was interested, so you could have anywhere from five to 30 kids who want to be in this club?
Correct.
And they would compete, and then the highest scoring of those kids would then enter tournaments? Is that?
So how the tournaments would work? So for a game like League of Legends, which is basically where six players go into an arena, and then they play like mythical creatures and try to get the victory. So we would have a team of six players playing against other schools, either in the region. And so if we had enough kids to play, or students to play for a six-man roster, we would have tryouts to see who would get to that six-man roster. And then they would play against other schools.
And it could vary from tournament to tournament.
And it could vary from tournament to tournament, it wouldn't be the same six players.
We could have, if we have enough students, we could even have two rosters.
And if the students are more talented, and they do progress far enough in the tournaments, we can get to summer invitationals, which will grant students a lot more money towards scholarship and tuition.
And I'm assuming this presentation has been done to Dr. Intieri and Mr. Hunter?
Oh, yes, oh, yes. And, you know, what's, some, there are some myths about video games that I had to strive to, but then my grandson became very, he's very involved. And I kept saying, get outside, get into the air, you know, because this was concerning me. And then I saw that he had a network of friends who were his team, and that this was really, like, that community of the science research students, this is a community. And they had a very, it was really very good for him socially and emotionally to have this experience. And then I heard this presentation, which really helped me understand. When I heard the presentation that Luke and Daniel gave, I felt at that moment that I truly did make the connection between the whole process. And I admired them for bringing this to our attention. And, you know, one of the things we're looking at always is, you know, with science research as well, how will this help students as they move on in college and career? And every, I've started to read the research too, and students who are adept in this area and also have social skills, you need both, they actually become very successful. They are sought after by some of the very large information technology firms, research firms, and so on. So, you know, I think it's exciting that we have two students. And again, if you recall, this year, our, one of our goals was student voice. And we've done a number of things this year, we've had a number of experiences where students have been able to share what they do. And this is another example, and it's really very beneficial.
In your research for the preparation for this, what kind of local buy-in is there on this high school electronic gaming league? As far as local, other local schools, or is it broader than that, as far as what you would actually compete in?
So there are many schools, especially in the city, who have programs like this and compete in this specific, like, tournament bracket and league. So we would play in regionals, but in our Hudson Valley area, I think the only other school in this, around here, is the Storm King School. And so we would be one of the first ones in our area specifically to start this and give it to our students.
But there's the possibility of hundreds of other schools, even a thousand schools across the country we'd have the chance to compete with.
Yeah, there are thousands of schools across the country who have tournaments like these. And especially CNN Business actually did an article recently on how, especially in, like, Atlanta, and how they're adapting to this type of, like, sport, and how they're recognizing it more as a sport and less of a hobby.
And you would start it at the beginning of the year next year? Or would you try to recruit people now in preparation for, like?
We would try to recruit people and hold tryouts now, so starting next year, we can jump right into the tournament bracket.
Just want to quickly, sorry, quickly recognize that it is not easy to stand before these people and be broadcast on TV and everything else.
And have us ask you questions.
Yes, questions. But I'm very impressed by the amount of thought and effort that went into your presentation. It's obvious that you guys came in well-prepared and knew what you were talking about. So I wanted to certainly acknowledge that. My, one question was about, what is, what do we have locally in terms of support of other schools, which we just addressed? My other question is, can you speak a little bit about what the, sort of, the technical requirements are? So I'm glad that you reached out to an advisor, that would certainly be the first step. My next question would be, what type of infrastructure, computers or consoles, would you need in order to compete?
See, many of the, pretty much all the students who would be competing have their own setups at home. So how would we work? It would basically be like a normal practice, it's like from, say, 3:00 to 4:30, except you go home, you don't stay at the school, you get on, you get on with your teammates, you practice for that certain amount of time, or you compete in tournaments for your designated time. And so that's how it would work, and potentially maybe, and especially in the, I talked about the LAN sessions, that's when the HSEL would basically sponsor bringing computers and consoles to either a room in the school or to someone's home, and all the students would go there and play. And so that's how that would work. But overall, the students would play from home until we either, until, like, something else happens, either in school or at school, where we can get, like, a place to play.
So I appreciate the foresight on this topic. I mean, I recognize that this is a multi-billion-dollar industry. And for people who don't sleep at night like myself, you turn on ESPN, you can see, like, arenas full of people, thousands and thousands of people there watching these esports competitions. So I think it's something very exciting, something we can look at.
The other, the only other question I had, just based on what Dr. Luck just asked, if a child was interested, a student, sorry, young person was interested, but their family did not have the system at home, they did not have a system at home, there were financial or other reasons why they don't have that kind of equipment. I would hate to exclude a student, you know, like we wouldn't from a regular sport. We would want to provide them whatever they needed. Maybe we could even, you know, as people grow out of their systems, maybe get new, like, maybe we could reach out to the community and get some systems, just to help, so that we're not turning down a student that's interested, but doesn't have the equipment at home.
Absolutely. We were thinking about fundraising, and for that specific situation, something like that, we could fundraise, and many modern consoles aren't that expensive, especially the second-generation ones. So they could only be, like, $200, and a couple of big sales, things like that, could help fundraise the money for those students who don't have the setups at home, but still want to participate. We wouldn't want to leave anyone out.
Right, okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Keep us posted, very excited.
Thank you.
Invite us to your. Do we actually have to go anywhere for a tournament, or do you, I'm not quite understanding. Do I sit in my own house and watch you all compete? I'm sorry, okay, no, they don't, that's fine, thank you very much.
Before we move on, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Mrs. Zupan. Is that Mrs. Zupan? No.
That's a nice woman.
You know, I was going to recognize Mrs. Zupan, because she takes all the photographs for the science research project. I thought, I'm sorry.
We do not have polygamy here.
She does all of those photographs. Jerry's, Mr. Zupan's wife does all the photographs for science, you know, for the WESF. And, you know, publicizes, does all of those things, so, sorry, you're in great company though.
I'm a little, I'm anticipating what Luke's going to come up with by the time he's a senior. Oh, okay, so we'll see.
It all comes together somehow.
It's great, very exciting. Okay. Can we get their presentation just?
Oh, could you, would you mind sending your presentation to me? And then I'll send it to the board. Oh, Maureen Haskins.
Okay, good, thank you.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
That was great. Okay. Our poor architects always have to follow the most unbelievably incredibly inspiring children.
This is inspiring.
Wait, wait.
At least it's not the auditor.
They come with pictures.
I hope you don't use the same big words that our students use. Maybe I can actually understand.
Second-generation games.
I know.
Okay, then, how many generations are there?
Those are a couple of tough acts to follow.
Yeah, it's not so easy.
Sitting there watching, my middle school or home just asked if we could go to an esports tournament. So it was pretty exciting to see the presentation on esports. So again, I'm Walter Hauser with KGND Architects, and I'm with Theresa May, who's a associate KGND and a project architect. And we're here to talk about the Capitol Project, talk a little bit about what has happened since we started working on it, give you an update on the design, an update on the schedule, and an update on the budget. So a lot has happened since you last saw us, obviously, congratulations on the passing of the referendum. And we've done an awful lot, including existing conditions surveys. So not only has our team and our engineering team been through all the buildings with drawings rolled out, measuring and taking pictures, but we've also engaged a number of third parties to come in. We've had a site surveyor, a company come locate utilities where the Wellness Center is proposed to go. And we will continue doing that with the geotechnical engineer. At some point, he'll come out and test the soil conditions, now that we have finalized building location. We've also gone to a lot of meetings. So the district has put together a very good process. It starts with, obviously, the Board of Education, the administrators. The district has created a steering committee of stakeholders throughout the district. We've met with the steering committee, I believe, twice so far. And we've met with user groups. So user groups are detailed stakeholder groups from each building. So a group from the elementary school, a group from the middle school, and a group representing the users, the future users of the Health and Wellness Center. And Theresa and I were trying to figure out how many meetings exactly we've been to. It's been a lot, which is great. We've heard a lot, we've talked a lot about the proposed plans, and we've got some great feedback from the district along the way. So as of tonight, we've completed schematic design. So schematic design, just generally speaking, is about 30% through the design process. In terms of what you see, the focus is, we've really come to finalized layouts. So we have plans that show rooms in the right location. They don't show the details within each room, that'll come in the next phase of the design. But we've got all the bits and pieces in the places they need to be. And that has come through, you know, detailed discussions at building level for each building. So Theresa's going to walk you through the proposed work at the elementary school, middle school, and high school. And then I'll come back in a couple minutes and talk to you about the budget and the schedule and the next steps. We have to adjust them.
Thank you, Walter. Good evening, everyone. So as Walter, yep, as Walt mentioned, the goal of schematic design is really to establish where we're doing work and how we're using those spaces. At the elementary school, the goal was to create a next-generation pocket and renovate the auditorium to better serve the multipurpose use and better serve the students and the community. This is a plan of the first floor of the elementary school. The areas in gray are the areas where we're not doing any work. The areas in purple are where we're renovating. So through the user group meetings, we really established that the next-generation pocket was going to happen in the existing faculty lounge and technology office, which are the small rectangle, purple rectangle to the left. And the larger rectangle to the right is the existing auditorium, which we're going to lightly renovate. In the auditorium, we're planning on replacing the lighting, as well as improving the lighting controls for the house lights and the stage lights. Right now, they just go on and off. We're hoping to introduce some dimming to those systems. We're also going to add air conditioning to the space, which will improve the ability to use it year-round. As far as creature comforts, at the rear of the auditorium are existing concrete stadium seating that are just painted. And we're planning on carpeting those areas to make them more comfortable to sit on and to designate walking and seating zones. To better serve the band, we're also going to include some instrument storage at the back of the stage, behind the rear curtain, and refinish the stage. For the next-generation pocket, we're going to take the faculty lounge and the technology office and combine them into one large room that's approximately a little over 1,200 square feet. So the room is going to accommodate a science classroom as well as a maker space. So at the left of the page, the room will be set up with built-in cabinets and a countertop to serve as more of a science lab. At the right, there's going to be shelves, adjustable shelves lining the walls, along with movable and nesting tables to serve as the maker space. And at the center, we'll have set up kind of a traditional classroom seminar space. The nice thing about this configuration is that the whole room can be cleared to do more dynamic teaching, things like robotics and technology classes can be accommodated in this space as well. Another feature that we're doing, we're adding, is to provide double doors onto the existing courtyard, so we can take advantage of that outdoor space. And those double doors would be glass, so that the children can play outside, either on a hard surface that's just outside of those doors, or on the grass, and still be observed by the teacher inside. So a teacher can set up a messy experiment, have the kids go outside, do that experiment, and still monitor them.
So those of you that are familiar with this area, this is the area generally where the garden space is. It's a good location to bring students outside. It's essentially encompassed by the building in its entirety with relatively few classroom windows looking out onto it. You know, obviously, work outside, when students are outside, it's the easiest way to distract as many kids as possible. But this offers a great level of control in terms of student activity outdoors.
So this is a view of the classroom, if you kind of took the ceiling off and looked at it like a shoebox. And we're looking towards the maker space at the rear of the room. And in the center would be a digital display for kind of a seminar space. And towards, closer around the page, is the science lab setup. And this is looking at the science lab, which would include a sync, its own visual display, as well as plenty of storage space. At the middle school, the goal is really to create a learning commons by renovating the cafeteria and infilling the courtyard, and maximize classroom space in the rest of the building. We also want to expand the cafeteria and the performance space to better serve the students and the community. So this is a site plan of the middle school. The gray areas are areas that are existing, the blue indicate additions to the school. So we'll infill the courtyard. We're also going to add an entry canopy and redo the main entrance to the middle school. And we're also going to provide a covered walkway between the middle school and the high school. This is a rendering of what the main entrance of the middle school would look like. We're providing a steel and glass canopy to replace the existing block and roof that are the existing entry canopy, as well as some site seating, so the kids can be at drop-off and pickup if they're waiting. There's places to sit, and even at lunchtime, if they want to come sit out here and read, they can. This is a first-floor plan of the middle school. At the left, we see the gymnasium will get renovated. The cafeteria will also be renovated, as well as the blue square indicating the courtyard infill. That'll be new square footage to the building. We're also planning on renovating the existing music classrooms and band rooms. At the right on the first floor, we're going to be renovating the nurses' suite, so the central core of the building. And at the second floor, we'll also be renovating the second floor of the building. The goal with the renovations to the classroom wing is to really maximize the existing classroom space around the perimeter of the building. So the idea is to take any of the offices or small group instructions that can be housed in smaller spaces and move them to the center of the building. So the classroom at the top of the page, the purple square at the top of the drawing, is currently two offices, it's split down the middle. So in order to use that as a classroom space, we're going to remove the wall and move those offices to the center of the building. So to bring us back downstairs to the cafeteria and social commons. So the gymnasium, the renovations to the gymnasium are really going to be mostly cosmetic. We're going to replace the basketball hoops, as well as relocate the ice machine, so it's more convenient to use. In the locker rooms, we're going to improve the restrooms in the boys' and the girls' locker rooms. The really dramatic change is going to be the social commons. So when we take the courtyard and fill it in, we're going to remove the east wall of the cafeteria, joining it with the courtyard. And we're going to renovate a classroom and turn it into the learning commons. So the learning commons is going to serve as the all-room does now. It's going to serve as a place for kids to come and do research. There will be computers, as well as reading areas, and collaborative workstations. At the bottom of the page, we see the flex maker space, that'll be a classroom and maker space. And then there's the social commons. All three of those spaces can open onto each other. And so it'll really be one space that the students can use for lots of different purposes. The, when kids are at, when the students are at lunch, they can use the learning commons. When kids are at, when the students are at lunch, they can use the learning commons to do homework, or they can be in the cafeteria. This is the central core of the first floor. So we're going to consolidate the nurses' office to the left side of the page. We're going to create two faculty toilets, as well as a janitor's closet and a handicap toilet. Then we have four small group instruction rooms, again centrally located because they don't have to have windows, and we're going to renovate the boys' and the girls' restroom. At the second floor, we're going to create, in that center core, a guidance suite, which houses the guidance counselors as well as the psychologists. There will also be a conference room and the assistant principal's office. This is a rendering of the social commons as you enter it from the corridor. At the right, you see the servery. At the left, there's the opening to the learning commons, as well as the flex maker space. The doors straight ahead lead out to the parking lot. You can see that this is a bright, open space. This is a view of the learning commons from the stage, so this is if it were set up for a performance. You may have noticed in the plan that we're leaving the existing music and band rooms intact. The wall at the left in the social commons will remain, but you're able to fan out the audience to the right, providing more seating for performances.
Just go back one second. So one of the things we've talked about is providing natural light in this space. When we take down the sidewall, we also lose some natural light coming into the cafeteria. So there are two strategies we're implementing to keep it bright and airy, and one of them you can see in this image, we're introducing some windows up high along the ceiling, which we then can be controlled with shades in the event of performance, but the idea is keep some natural light coming in. So the existing ceiling will come out, we'll see some of the structure, we'll paint it, add new lighting, and then we're also going to introduce some acoustic treatment up there, probably some hanging baffles. One of the things we heard very clearly from the middle school group is, middle schoolers are really loud, especially when you have a cafeteria full of them. So we're going to focus not only on the acoustic performance for our theater or something happening on the stage, but also just everyday use of the space. Hopefully, we can make some improvement on the acoustics.
At the high school, we're going to be building a new health and wellness center. This will be an indoor, an enclosed indoor turf facility with a walking path, as well as a field area, a netting system that can be used to divide up the space, and an area for batting cages. There's also, we're also providing equipment storage. There's a site plan of, a partial site plan of the high school. At the top of the page is Peak Skill Hollow Road. At the bottom, we see the existing gymnasium. The big blue square is the new health and wellness center. So in order to construct the health and wellness center, we will be providing a construction access driveway. So the light gray driveway is the existing driveway. The dark gray driveway is the construction access driveway. So this will be in place for the duration of construction, and it will remain for emergency access to the fields if there ever needs to be.
Yeah, I would just say it'll be a temporary drive. It's really during construction, you're going to have some gravel on it just to stabilize it, and once construction's complete, I think we would return it back to grass, but it potentially with some stabilization so that it could afford emergency access only up to the top field, it wouldn't remain as a functional driveway, just a grated incline once construction's complete. Just go back to that one second. So we talked about this at our most recent steering committee. It's a little difficult to see, but on the lower-left corner, we've got a little bit darker grass area. I'll just step over here for a second. So right through here, that's roughly centerfield fence right now on the baseball diamond. So the effort in fitting the wellness center in, as well as some of the temporary construction to allow for access and staging, is really about threading the needle between the geothermal field that's out there, the baseball field, and the existing road and utilities that run in proximity to the building. So we've been working very hard on finding those utilities, citing the building as best we can. As we get a little farther along with the phasing logistics plan, we're going to do the best we can to keep the temporary access and staging area as far away from the baseball diamond as we can, but we do think it's going to be right in the proximity of centerfield. We'll move it over as far as we can to the building, but there may be a little bit of impact on the centerfield distance of the fence. So we talked about potentially having a short porch in centerfield, so hit it straight away.
So this is a plan of the health and wellness center, and so we've changed up the color scheme a little bit here. The blue, so the interior of the health and wellness center will have a turf field, but we want to designate two zones of that turf field. Field for play, as well as a perimeter walking path that can really serve as a warning track around the edge of the field. This will also be separated by a perimeter net that can be raised or drawn away if you want to have the whole space open. At the right of the plan, you see two full-size batting cages to give you a sense of the scale of this building. The field will be one hundred and forty feet by eighty feet wide, and will provide plenty of room for play. It's connected to the existing high school, which is the gray square at the top of the page, via a vestibule that has water fountains in it. At the right is a storage room that can serve to store equipment for the indoor use of the health and wellness center, as well as equipment to use out on the fields. There'll be two garage doors that can open all the way so that the equipment can be pulled out to the field or into the health and wellness center. In talking with the user groups, it became clear that we want to use the health and wellness center not just as a field for sports, but as a room for learning. So in this setup, we could designate three zones within the health and wellness center. At the right, we have batting cages. At the center, we've designated a field space that's surrounded by perimeter netting. And at the left, we've created something, kind of a dynamic classroom space. So the white ovals you see are what we like to refer to as like a Murphy bed kind of table. It can fold up against the wall, protecting the digital screen at the end of it, but they're really collaborative workstations. So when you want to use this as a classroom, you fold the tables down. There's a digital display at the end, and the kids, the students can work on collaborative projects and come to the center to use that space. We see this used for a physics classroom or robotics lessons, where you need both collaborative workstations and room to experiment and play.
So can everybody see where those zones are? A little tough to read, but there are two of them. I'll just point them out.
There's one here and one here, and an open space in the middle.
The open space also includes a concept for a wall-mounted apparatus. So I like to think of it kind of as a CrossFit wall with pull-up bars and climbing. The idea being that there are a bunch of physical activities that could happen on this wall. In any scenario, there could be, you know, active motion that's data-logged in the middle of this, between the two collaborative spaces, and then a digital environment on either side where students could return, collect data, share it, compile it, and collaborate. Certainly, you know, there could be, we heard a lot of really excellent science research ideas. Part of the thinking here is we can envision something like a physics experiment happening in the middle, potentially using some, you know, the entirety of that field and turning essentially the whole space at the end of the wellness center into a classroom environment certainly could accommodate very easily two full classes.
The exterior of the health and wellness center would blend with the rest of the campus. There would be brick and metal panel and a green roof, as well as a cowl wall system, which is like a translucent window system, but it's not glass. It's...
Polycarbonate.
Thank you. Polycarbonate, which is really durable and can be hit with lacrosse balls and not break. This is the interior rendering of the health and wellness center. Again, you see the turf field surrounded by perimeter netting, allowing for a walking or jogging path around the exterior while there's play going on on the field and a lot of natural light. Okay, turn it over to Walt for the budget.
I could talk about this part. So as part of the schematic design work, we've updated the budget. So essentially, we take the same strategy that was used to develop the pre-bond budget and applied square footage cost to the blue and purple areas we saw in all the diagrams. The long and short of it is that results in something that's slightly higher than the pre-bond, the bond authorization, but this is very typical at this stage in the game. We are within range of exactly what we said we were going to do. A one percent variance is really, in many regards, just a normal error of an estimate at this stage. We do have a process in play. Quickly, the things that are driving that change, one is we added a storage area to the health and wellness center. It made a lot of sense. We're going to have all this equipment there. We need somewhere to put it. So that added a little bit of square footage to that building. And the consolidation of the next-gen learning pocket at the elementary school involved a slightly more extensive renovation of that space. Those are the two things that are putting some pressure on our budget. Again, we think it's well within acceptable range at this point. We have a method in place to control costs as we go forward. I'll talk about that in a second. I think I mentioned the two things that were, that we talked, the wellness center and storage. I will say that the work at the middle school has shifted around the building, but it's consistent with the quantity and scope of the bond referendum. So moving forward, we will continue to estimate the project and get to the end of design development. We'll have design to sufficient detail where both KG&amp;D and your construction manager, Triton Construction, can do a detailed systems estimate. So that will result in a twenty-page estimate that goes line by line through every component of the project. They'll do a specific takeoff on casework, MEPs, systems, finishes, steel, concrete. And at that point, we'll have a very strong mechanism to control cost and scope going forward. At this point, there's no issue to be concerned, but just generally speaking, with our insight on the construction market right now, people are very busy, and we are seeing prices creeping up a little bit. So we just are going to be careful with that going forward, but our process in place will manage that. Each step of the way, we'll have ability to control that, and obviously, if we have an issue, we'll report it back to the board. So looking forward, we anticipate completing design development in May. We anticipate completing construction documents in July and submitting the project to SED in August. We've highlighted in bold the SED submission, as well as the start of construction. Those are our critical path milestones. The difference between the July completion of construction documents and the submission to SED is to allow for an estimate to occur. So that'll be our last check on the cost of the project before it goes to SED. SED, we're anticipating a third-party review. We're seeing a lot of success with that process right now. They've added, I believe, eleven additional firms to that, to the review team or eligible parties. I'm not promising this for this project, but we have seen single contract projects like a roofing replacement come out in one week. So large additions and renovations projects typically ten to twelve weeks. So that's a vast improvement over the current standard review of about a year at SED. So we anticipate employing that process and being able to bid and award contracts for construction in the fall. So in very short order, there's going to be a lot going on at all three campuses, all three buildings. So that's our update. I don't know if you have any questions or...
I have actually two. One, just quick clarification. Is the middle school learning commons the same as the cafeteria?
Yes.
Does it have different furniture at different times? One has tables and one has chairs or...
We'll just show you the plan quickly. So there are, what we're referring to...
I'm the blueprint challenge, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay.
I've always struggled.
Couple of different names out there. We think of it as the sweetest basis. So there are essentially three rooms that can connect to each other, as well as the music suite. So I was just going to go, maybe I can take this with me.
Just pull it out. Just pull. That's it.
All right. So this is the existing cafeteria footprint, that big chunk of purple there. This is the music and band area. Music and band area is going to stay as-is in its existing configuration. We're going to make a number of improvements for acoustic reasons. We heard from the middle school user groups that there are some issues, even when people are cooking in the kitchen, you can hear them in the music room. So we can make an improvement there. But when I say three spaces, calling this the learning commons, flex maker space, and then this is essentially the cafeteria. So the cafeteria is taking over a part of this blue footprint, and then there are doors that go in between all three spaces.
Those are regular doors?
Yes, those are double doors, yep, with a fixed wall. So the idea is depending on the time of day, those spaces can be used differently, and in particular, this zone right here can be leveraged to be part of the learning commons, part of the flex maker, work all together, or simply be the cafeteria closed off.
So I can quickly put that into punditally terms. So that the learning commons is something very similar to what we're in right now. It's in the high school library in terms of furniture and feel and function, obviously much smaller in size. The flex maker space is something akin to the current all-room upstairs. In fact, in some ways, we plan on just simply moving that furniture downstairs and making that a flexible classroom space that teachers can bring their classes to. And then obviously, that cafeteria, social commons, is the cafeteria, but is, could also be sort of, big glass double doors can be opened up and make it feel like a much larger space if we have large functions that really incorporate all three of those spaces into what feels like one large space.
And this is the performance space.
Like performances, correct.
Excellent, okay.
But we did make the decision, for sound reasons and other reasons, that we wanted that to be a solid wall between the cafeteria and the learning commons. You can picture, and this had to come up at our last meeting, is you have middle schoolers blasting away on trumpets and saxophones and everything else, and then you have a class in the learning commons reading that, without having a solid wall and a good acoustic properties, that could be an issue from one to the other, so.
Do you want to also mention the outside, the way to get...
Oh, yes. So off of the corridor, we're also creating a new little corridor that goes out to the rear, to the asphalt playground at the rear. Right now, the students go through the gymnasium, out to that asphalt, and back in with their messy shoes and everything. So this creates a direct path from the cafeteria through the corridor, out to that play space, and back.
And that was just part of a classroom, that space?
It's actually the end of the existing girls' locker room, so we're reducing the size of the shower room, which is currently used for storage, and we're going to renovate the toilet room. So it's just the end of the girls' locker room.
That segues into my other question, and I hope it's not a budget issue, Jill, and hope it could only maybe be a signage issue. Is there any way in doing the bathrooms that we can look at designated a bathroom as a gender-neutral bathroom? It's certainly a direction that a lot of our schools are going in the region. We've just talked about, we have to be non-traditional in the way we think, so I don't know, I wouldn't want to say the handicap bathroom is a gender-neutral bathroom. I wouldn't want to say that people who are gender-neutral need a handicap space, but if we can work on some signage or just have that in our thinking.
Right. No, certainly. I mean, that is the space we're targeting, but handicap bathroom simply means it's accessible to them, and we would make sure that we had signage on that space. It's a single-stall, single-user environment where anyone could feel comfortable using, so it wouldn't be, it's not like under lock and key unless it's necessary. It's a bathroom that would be open and available to students regardless of what their need is, and we would certainly have signage up that noted that.
Great.
Since we're still in the cafeteria, the change in the size now, just to be clear, now allows an entire grade to have lunch at the same time? I know that was one of the goals.
Yeah. We believe that's the case. In fact, we've even gone as far as saying, what erases the possibility for is the possibility for having two grade levels actually have lunch at the same time, well, have the same lunch period where half, one grade level can eat while the other one's at recess and then swap the other way. So it's feasible, and we actually have a team of teachers working on a schedule for the middle school this week or next week. But it's one of the things that's now an option that wasn't an option before, is our whole building, the schedule in the middle school is really derived around lunch periods. Students travel in cohorts, they have to go to lunch at the same time. It's amazing what that lunch period can do to a schedule, and to be, the thought of being able to go from four lunch periods to the possibility of two lunch periods is something that would really free up schedule. something that would really free up scheduling for that building. And we've even sort of explored the possibility, possibly down the road, of doing something like a community lunch for seventh and eighth graders and having them go to lunch at the same time and being able to serve a large number of students and giving them the flexibility. If that were the case, and we were going in that direction, that would obviously increase our ability to offer electives and provide maybe students, seventh and eighth grade students with some choice and move out of what's really a cohort-driven model of scheduling to something for the seventh and eighth graders that offers a little more flexibility and serves as sort of a transition between the middle school and what they'll experience at the high school. So, all of those are feasible, and a big reason for that is the larger-sized cafeteria could serve more students.
And currently, this is a little digression, but currently, grades are going together but split by alpha or whatever cohort, and half are going or doing recess and the other half are actually having lunch now. You could do both, doing both?
Correct. So, even if we stayed with four periods, we can have all students eat together, all the students go to recess together, or it opens the possibility to have two grade levels at a time and then do that same swap back and forth between lunch and recess.
Yeah, currently, do the music classes not go on during the four lunch periods?
They have lessons during those four lunch periods, but their schedule is worked out so the band themselves that uses the stage is not scheduled. So, there's a nine-period day over there. We have four periods of lunch, we have four periods of band, so that room is used eight of the nine periods a day for large groups.
But would this also give them a little more flexibility, right? Because you'd have two less periods of lunch.
If they went to a two-period lunch, certainly would offer flexibility for our band as well.
Okay. That's pretty engaging.
Could I just ask about the Wellness Center a little bit? The 140 by 80, is that just the green area or the entire area across in the back?
That's the green area.
Green area, 140 by 80. And the pictures, which were just depictions, that you probably don't know this, but we have a couple of sports that have been living in the dark ages for many, many years, in my opinion. Wrestling and cheerleading have been turning out championship teams and participants for 15 years at least while practicing in hallways and cafeterias. So, I'm going to assume that the longtime coaches, Mr. Corano and Mrs. Albano, are going to have first dibs when you're constructing the interiors of these various spaces and where storage is going to be designated for them and their beleaguered teams who keep winning championships even though they are working in the dark areas.
Do you want to answer that, Walt?
Please.
You can take ownership over.
Sure.
Everybody answer.
The answer is correct.
Yeah, there was a long discussion about the...
Great.
The performance area for them, you know, the requirements within the space for them, but more importantly, the storage of that equipment.
Those mats are big.
Yeah. And that was, you know, part of the genesis of adding the storage room, is that we need a place to put these things, and they can't just be put along the perimeter of the building. We need a place where they can put away, store properly and easily accessed.
So, one of the things those teams run into is having to practice late in the evening during the sort of flexing of spaces, and this space is large enough where our wrestlers and our cheerleaders could actually practice in a normal time slot following the school day simultaneously and have their storage in that additional storage space right there as opposed to having to carry the mats up and downstairs and out of cafeterias and such.
So, on a very technical basis, this turf, the turf is sitting on a slab or is it sitting, it's not like a partially outside, this is totally inside as far as the turf is on slab?
It's totally inside, but we're probably not going to put a slab underneath it for a couple of reasons. One is, there's no real need to have a slab there. What we really want to do is just control moisture. So, our current thinking, and we're not quite there yet in terms of the technical configuration of it, we have some homework to do with turf manufacturers, but we want to control the vapors, but putting a concrete slab under the turf only makes it harder.
Right.
And part of the consideration with turf, it has to do with GMAX and resistance date, impact resistance for students. So, the current thinking is it'll sit on a gravel bed with a built-up layering system just like you would do outside.
So, then, my question is for Jeremy or maybe David. Obviously, wrestling, they don't wrestle on turf, and I'm assuming cheer also will not cheer on turf. They'll cheer on mats.
Yeah, their existing mats that they have that are used in the hallways and the cafeteria would be stored in this, in this facility and just rolled out and unrolled, and it would be the same surface that they're used to and actually would have a much more cushion underneath than it does in the hallway or the cafeteria where they are now.
And then places to watch the activities if they're going to host something, or will there be some sort of stands or something for parents and spectators?
So, there are no built-in stands. The idea is if there is an event, such as a wrestling event, where there's anticipation of a large crowd, that small, kind of three-tier bleachers can be brought in there. Movable equipment would be brought in to provide seating.
But they're going to be a real event, they'd be in the gym anyway, for the most part, right?
Yeah.
Unless there's two events going on with the cheerleaders and the wrestlers, and we don't want anybody in the hallway, et cetera. And by the one last thing, I know that it's 1% difference between the estimate and the money, that's okay that you're coming in under it by 1%.
Over.
Over.
Yeah.
Did I miss that?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Slightly over.
My blood pressure went up 1%.
Okay, we'll hear what you have next time.
Yeah. I mean, the message I would give you on it is that we're within range, it's very close, and the level of accuracy of that type of estimate is such that, you know, that could be a variation just on a small unit cost. So, when we get to a detailed estimate, you know, that'll be the time we'll make an adjustment. Right now, there's no need to make any adjustments.
I just want to quickly recognize the work that's gone into this with Teresa and Walt, and they're not underestimating the number of meetings we've had. Many of us, this is sort of our first time going through this whole process, so they're sort of on speed dial. Once Jill, Dave and I get in a room alone, we start drawing on the whiteboard, which always results in more money. But they've been very receptive, they've been very open, they've come over sort of on a whim and walked through buildings and talked things out with us. It's, they have this sort of calming nature to them where when you're in a room with 30 people who are really excited about this but actually have 30 different ideas for what we should do, they do an excellent job of sort of steering that conversation to something that's realistic, something that we can afford, and something that's obviously going to benefit students. So, I did want to just take a moment to recognize the amount of work. And I left this steering committee the other night sort of with this feeling of like, wow, like, this actually is going to happen. Like, you start to see all this work come to, we were moving walls around, like, they were Lego blocks a couple of weeks ago, and now all of a sudden, we're in a place where, all right, we're committing to this and we're going to start moving forward with the design phase. So, I anticipate it only getting more exciting as the time goes on, and that means more questions will be asked and they'll have to answer more questions. But we'll, we'll get through it. So, I just wanted to recognize your work and thank you.
And the calendar calls for us being done by the end of next year.
Oh, I did want to, so, what they had spoke about, we actually accelerated the process. Our original thinking was that this would be a two-summer cycle of, to complete the construction phase. Obviously, the longer the construction phase goes on, the more expensive the project's going to be. The hope is that the expedited approval process through the state would allow us to get started earlier, and our hope is if we get started earlier, that we can do some work on the Health and Wellness Center, maybe some work within the infill of the middle school, that we could possibly finish the interior work of the middle school within one summer, maybe having to flex a little bit into June and September and come up with some creative solutions. But it certainly would shorten the construction cycle, which obviously lessens the disruption to our instructional program as well as keeps our costs lower.
Yeah, I mean, it's an aggressive schedule to get done in one summer, particularly at the middle school, the Health and Wellness Center can kind of be on its own path, it doesn't disrupt school activities. The elementary school is a concise enough alteration project that can happen over a summer. There's a lot of work that's going to happen inside the middle school, and it's an aggressive track, but the idea in working with Triton Construction is we're going to develop a schedule, a plan that can get it done in one year instead of stretching it over two. As soon as we start to get more detailed plans, Triton Construction is going to start to do a lot more work on phasing logistics. I know they're already putting together some ideas on how that can happen, but as Dr. Love said, the difficulty will be trying to get some work done in advance of the summer. Just eight weeks is just not enough time to build an addition and do a complete renovation of the cafeteria area. So, we're going to evaluate options and come up with some recommendations.
Since we're talking about the construction access drive, so, do we estimate that that will be there January 2020 to December 2020, or will it be there longer than that?
It'll be there during the duration of construction, so, yeah, that would be the timeframe, about a year.
Because that would only impact one baseball season if it's one year.
Yeah, that's the idea.
Okay.
We have some contingency plans, and we've started to discuss it. Our hope is still to be able to use that field.
Yeah.
But we've, we're accepting the fact that it may ultimately end up that that's not the case, and in which case, we would look to flex to the town park, and we would figure it out and have to be creative for that one year. The other hope is that maybe we can get through this varsity season and before we infringe on the field over the summer. But I know that's something that Walt has been working on and, as well as Triton, is very involved in that sighting of where everything will be, and we're going to hold out hope in that maybe we have a little bit of a shorter fence. It's nice that we have a movable fence, so it's easy enough for us to move as long as it's a realistic distance. We're going to do whatever we can to keep the games on site here.
Have, you know, every team wanting to come play here and get their stats way up.
We're going to put a green jacket on.
You just got to keep it low and inside.
Can we sell? Thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, Janine, look what's next.
I know. Oh, no.
Is that everything else we have or a discussion? It's a discussion.
Can I just do a quick interruption for a second? We have a substitute PTA, PTSA rep here sitting in for Christina Casey, and the next couple of conversations are certainly relevant to parents. We're going to be talking about the calendar and the budget. But Sylvia, would you like to do your report now rather than wait? We can move you out of order.
I can't, yeah, it's just going over a few of the...
Is everybody on the board? Is there okay with that?
I just want to look at things that are coming up over the next two weeks. Sorry, guys, and they do, I actually do have to run.
No, no, because then we're going to talk about the calendar for some time.
You can watch online.
Save the best for last, right?
It can be fast.
Okay, well, just go over some notes. The PTA is sponsoring, we brought back the spelling bee. I don't know if you guys knew that, but that's very exciting. So, March 26th, this is when the students will receive the words, so that's next week. And this is exciting, it's, the semifinals are going to be April 25th, and then we'll have the actual finals May 30th. We'll get more information out to you guys, too. May 13th is going to be the finals. Okay? And then we also have the 31 fundraiser benefit for the PTA. Purchases can be made until this Sun, is it this Sunday, March 31st? Okay? And you, the PTA is going to earn 20% of the sales.
Not this Sunday, next Sunday.
A week from Sunday.
See, my days are all off, guys. So, we have, we have two weeks about, right?
That's online or?
It's, yeah, check Facebook, and then it's also on the website.
I love a 31 band.
And then we're also sending out the, what is, original works? Sorry, send an email. It's where we do the artwork. We did this last year, I don't know if you guys saw it, but we basically send packets out and kids draw, and then you can order different pieces of art, and that is going to be due, that's going to be due April 2nd. Okay, but I think that's pretty much all I have right now.
Okay. You have a meeting with the math, right, there's a PTA meeting next week with, with Mr. Coleman at 6 o'clock, right? It's at an earlier time, I know.
But, oh, you know what, yes, till 27, 6 p.m. with Mr. Coleman, and it's the math standards.
That's at the elementary school faculty room.
Yeah, the, yes, PV, yeah, elementary school with the math teacher. The topic will be the state math, sorry, I missed that note. She sent this last minute, so I apologize, I was not prepared.
Doing a great job.
No, that's great.
I mean, the fact that you're doing, the PTA is doing all these things, it's lots of juggling.
Okay, yeah, and I actually just saw another note. We're actually doing a cookbook fundraiser, and we're looking for elementary and middle school staff members to submit their favorite recipes. If you're interested, we also have that on the website, and you can contact Teresa. She's on our PTA, she's the vice president of the PTA for that. Any other questions or anything I missed? Because, no, that's good.
No, that's great. You do an incredible job.
Next time, I will have it printed.
No, no, thank you.
The fundraising is incredible because, for example, the play today, The Wizard of Oz, a lot of the support comes from it.
Yeah, we're so excited about that, and we're always, if you guys have any ideas too, I mean, we're always looking for new ideas to try to bring to the students.
It really does enhance what we present our students, so that's great.
Yeah, we just did the pocketbook bingo, so, you know, anything you guys have, send us.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
No problem, anytime. Okey-dokey.
Do you want to take a break first or jump right in?
That's fine. Jump right in.
So, this is a continuation of the conversation we began last board meeting regarding the calendar. I know after a lengthy conversation, we had, we, the board had made the decision to move forward with option C, and option C was obviously contingent upon receiving a memorandum of agreement from the, from the Punta Valley Federation of Teachers. So, the update since that last meeting was, it appears that the union was not able to get the support it needed to sign that SMOA. So, that left us with really no other option but to move forward what would have been sort of the BOSI's calendar. Today, Ms. Dordy and I met with the PVFT and through our regular negotiation session and had a lengthy conversation regarding the school calendar again. At this meeting, the union had agreed to, sort of verbally again, to agree to sign an SMOA for a fourth conference day for next school year only, and then to deal with the number of conference days through our normal contractual negotiations. So, the SMOA would represent one year, which would obviously allow us to set the calendar now for next school year and then provide us the opportunity to sort of solidify that language through the collective bargaining process that is already underway. And then the other caveat to that was rather than including contractual language that said the district had the right to start before Labor Day, the contract's silent on it right now. Rather than putting that into contractual languages through an SMOA that the union had offered to co-author an email that would go out to all of their membership that says, recognizes the district's ability to start before Labor Day and provides the union's support of that practice to, to achieve the calendar that they're looking to achieve. Did I miss anything, Ms. Dordy?
I don't think so. I think it was a summary.
So, that was hot off the presses as of a few hours ago. So, I think that leaves us with two options. We can either adopt the BOSI's calendar, which was calendar A from last board meeting's discussion, or we can, or the board can make the decision to, once again, table the calendar discussion with the understanding that calendar C would again be the option, and then that would afford us time to solidify the SMOA, to get the contractual right to then adopt that calendar. So, I just wanted to present those options to you and provide you with the most up-to-date information.
So, my first question is to ask Ms. Dordy, when do you need to do, don't you already have default dates in your...
We do have default dates in our IEPs already, so, we, you know, no matter what, we have to go back in and enter those dates, so.
So, I mean, then generally, the two different calendars really aren't addressing start date of students and end date of students. So, you can go ahead and have your meetings, which you should be having.
And ultimately, the only difference is the 20th and 21st of February.
Correct.
And you can, you can back them out anyway, right?
That doesn't matter.
Right. Okay.
Okay, what?
I, I, I think we wait and see. I think we see if they are able to...
I am really appreciative of the four super...
I am really appreciative of the four superintendent conference days. I think that that's, I think that that's needed. I think that that's in the best interest of students and staff. So, anything that can push that forward, I think is the right way to go.
I think that's important.
Yeah, I do.
And it returns the vacation in February.
But that's less important to me.
I agree 100%. I, I agree 100%.
Okay, so, it sounds like I'll continue to work with the union. I'll try again to get a signed SMOA for what we need in order to adopt that calendar. Once we know we have SMOA in hand with the understanding that's gonna be the calendar to move forward with, that we don't necessarily have to wait till the next board meeting for like, Ms. Dordy to start setting those dates. Once we know that we have that in hand, it'll, we don't have to wait for the next board meeting before we start changing anything.
We will support that calendar.
And now we know it's one calendar or the other, right? We're down to two. Last time, there were four.
Moving along, Mr. Smith, you're right.
One or the other, right?
Correct.
Okay, great.
So, that means we're gonna, we move motion number four from the agenda.
The adoption of the calendar.
Or each, I'll say no.
Nah, we changed our mind. Okay. Well, that was fairly painless. I love these like last-minute little things, like, you know, I mean, I don't love them.
Really?
One way, then the other, then the other.
Well, I was glad to hear, yeah, that's the last minute, last minute, because that was a positive to me.
Right.
That's so rare.
Disappointed and I was so glad to see that.
It's so rare that the last-minute thing is a positive.
Right.
Okay, we are now going to hear a budget presentation from our very own valuable.
Speaking of a positive thing.
Very own valuable leader of finance, District Treasurer Jill Figueroa.
Ladies and gentlemen.
So, I didn't have some buildup. Maybe we need a light. Dan, can we think about a spotlight for Jill in the future?
No, we're gonna turn the lights down.
Something not red.
Some music, maybe?
Some music.
Yeah, some entry music, or maybe we could get a screen to do it.
There's a lot of songs with money in it, money, money.
Can't use that wall as a screen? Yeah, probably could.
Okay, good evening. I'm gonna review the budget presentation with some minimal changes from last time. Not money changes, but just some, a few extra slides I'd like to go through. So, we're gonna talk about the Putnam Valley School District 2019-20 budget. And again, our student enrollment, for those who haven't seen it, this is where we are with the enrollment figures. We have our 18-19 actual student enrollment. In addition to that, the 16-42, we have 18 out-of-district students currently. And in 1920, we are expecting the same amount of out-of-district at this, at this time. And we have an expected enrollment of 1,607 students. The note that I wanted to make sure everyone saw was that last year, when we adopted the budget, or after we adopted the budget, we had an influx of students, 111 new students, and come into the district, and we've only had 28 leave. So, it's quite a big fluctuation from what we had thought when we originally adopted the budget. So, I just wanna make that note, and we don't know where that's going for the upcoming year, as of yet. And we don't know until August where that lands. People come and go between now and then.
But those students were spread, like, they weren't grouped in a, in a grade or school, right?
No, it was throughout, it was district-wide. It was, you know, spread throughout. So, here is a look at our program and staff changes that we're expecting for 2019-20. We are expecting to continue with our current programs. We are looking at adding a ninth-grade level of Mandarin, if the demand exists when the schedules are finished getting developed. I think right now, we're waiting for assessments to take place in Mandarin to make that decision. And this is a distance learning program that's offered through Orange Ulster BOSI's. It's not one that we have teachers for present on our own campus. We share that service with other districts. We also have these staff changes taking place district-wide. We have three teacher retirements. And we have 13 support staff throughout the district retiring on June 30th. There are reductions in store for the instructional part of the program, and that's 3.4 teachers. And there are three bus drivers who are retiring. And we are not sure whether we will be able to replace them ourselves, or we will have to contract, you know, have them provided by the contractor. We're unsure at this time, and as you know, and everybody's been talking about shortage on bus drivers. So, it's a matter of who we can get in place, if we can do it ourselves or not. The additions for the staff, and we are looking at a groundskeeper custodian, that's one person at the middle school, high school campus. And also built into the budget currently is one new clinician.
Jill, can I stop you there?
Absolutely.
Can we talk more about the reductions, as to what they are, where they come from, the 3.4?
I think, Jeremy, Dr. Love can speak to that.
Three to four or three?
3.4.
Okay, sorry.
Thirty-four.
I knew it wasn't 30.
Take it easy, it's 3.4.
We're going to a K8 school. So, the reductions, I'm gonna go off the top of my head right now. So, the reductions are, there's actually a reduction of 4.4 and then an addition of 1, I believe, which is what offsets it. So, the reductions are reducing one science teacher at the high school is an anticipated reduction. We're going from six sections to five sections in both fifth and sixth grade, so those are two more. And the final one is, we're going from five to four reading teachers, split between the elementary and the middle school. So, rather than having three and two, the principals worked it out where they're gonna have two and two. So, those are the four reductions. The point comes from an art position that we're looking to fill part of an art position internally and, and only have to fill up to 0.8 of that art position.
So, we're looking at.
And I think that's the difference between the two.
So, the 3.4 is truly a combination of pluses and minuses in different areas and different grade levels.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, to go over the revenue details, we have, I made, you know, obviously, when we get revenue, we're not sure exactly on those amounts that are coming in. So, some assumptions that I've made in developing the revenue is that we will have improved, or we should have improved, interest earnings. So, I'm counting on that. We also have one out-of-district tuition that we know about for next year. Our overall state aid increase that we're looking at right now, and we don't have a final state budget until April 1st. So, right now, we are looking at an increase of $219,000 for our district. And mentioning that the New York State Foundation Aid, which is the biggest or the largest portion of aid that we receive as a district, is not being paid at the formula rate that most districts, sorry about that, most districts had hoped to receive. The, the formula is, has not been kept true for the districts. And therefore, the district is, all districts across the state are losing, are losing foundation aid that they were promised. And for us, it's, it's a big deal, and most districts it is too, because their revenue is not coming in at the same rate that they had expected.
Jill, is that based on the governor's budget and not the, the additional increases that the, that legislature and the senate are proposing as part of their negotiation with the governor, as far as the foundation aid is out of piece of it?
Foundation aid, yes, that's as far as the foundation aid goes, yes.
That's the Cuomo number?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and also included in our revenue assumptions are a reduced reliance on the use of fund balance. In 1819, our budget was balanced using $2.2 million of general fund reserves and up $1.3 million of debt service reserves. For 1920, I'm proposing that we only use $1.5 million of general fund reserves and less reliance on the debt service reserves, as well as $1.1 million brought over from our debt service to support the principal and interest payments that we have to make. So, this is our total picture of revenue and listed by source. We have our state and federal sources coming in around $11 million. It's, it's about $219,000 more than we actually got. So, we budgeted for 10.4 last year, but we ended up getting 10.7. So, the increase is around 219. That's why I have those numbers in blue. We also have, again, an increase expected in our local revenues, which is the interest earnings and the one out-of-district tuition that I mentioned. The tax revenue, our school taxes, our tax cap is, when done with the calculation, is, is about 2.2%. It's about 2.08%, and we're looking at adding an additional 1.99% to the tax levy, which equates to about $732,000. The appropriated fund balance or reserves that we are planning on using, as mentioned in an earlier slide, is 1.5 million. That's a decrease over what we used last year, of $721,000. And our appropriated debt reserve, $1 million, as opposed to the 1.3 that we used last year. So, overall, our budget-to-budget change would be 0.75%. That's under 1%. We're looking at $385,000 increase on a $51 million budget. And here is our expense information, our expenditure.
Jill, that's the budget-to-budget expenses, that's not tax levy.
Well, the change, your revenues and your expenses are equal to each other, so the change in revenue and the change in expense is gonna be the same percentage. It's just what you use to do that balancing. So, the reserves, again, using less, but.
The levy is 37.
The levy is a 1.99% increase, but the budget-to-budget is 0.75. So, for, as far as expenditures go, we, or what, what changes are we gonna see? We're gonna see new labor contracts for teachers. Teacher negotiations are underway now. We have all our support staff contracts, our vendor contracts for purchasing, BOSI's program services, equipment contracts. We're gonna see a 3.5% increase in health premiums. That equates to about $205,000. A change possibly in our transportation contractor. Not sure where that's going to end up. We have an RFP out for services right now. We have our new ninth-grade level of Mandarin that we may be adding, and not adding to the numbers I have that are included in the budget already. And we have our staff replacements and enhancements that we discussed in the earlier slide. Savings that I'm expecting in the budget are through our teachers, the pension contributions that we make for teachers' retirement system at 1.13% decrease, which is about $135,000. And then we have all our staff and teacher retirements that will realize about a $450,000 savings on the expenditure lines and salaries. So, overall, these are the five main categories of expenditures. We have our general support. Just a slight change that includes all of our instruct, all of our, I'm sorry, general support is all of our administration, business office, finance, operations and maintenance. We're seeing overall increase $25,000. Instruction, which is the largest portion of our budget, we're seeing, actually seeing a decrease there. We had all of the retirements, and so, most of that had an, that's where the impact is. Transportation, a slight increase, and that, again, is due to our district contractual change with our transportation contractor. And then the employee benefits, we're looking at a decrease there. That's a combination of the pension decrease and the health insurance increase. So, that's a net effect there of about a $105,000 decrease. And our debt service, you see the biggest change, $412,000. That is really, we have classified in the instruction area usually, the cost for our installment purchase contracts on laptops. But now, we are classifying them in a different area of the budget, which is in the debt service. The state wants us to classify them there. And so, that is the reason for the change there. That would normally be on your instruction line, so.
But moving forward, it'll now live.
It'll live there in the debt service.
So, we won't see that increase that way again?
You won't see that. So, this is a more detailed rundown of the expenditures. So, our general education school programs, we're seeing a slight, we're seeing a decrease of $327,000. That's, again, due to the, the teacher retirements. The benefits, employee mandated benefits, we're seeing a decrease overall. Again, combination of the health insurance increase and the teacher retirement pension decrease. The special apportionment programs are for students with disabilities. We are anticipating possibly a few more students. So, we see an increase there, $365,000. The pupil transportation contract and district-operated transportation, that's a combination of both. We're seeing our contractual costs going up about $115,000. Our debt service, principal and interest, again, that's the same item we just spoke about with the IPAs included now in the, that's the installment purchase agreements for the laptops and the copiers across the district. We see a change there of $421,000. That would normally be in other categories. Central services, facilities, maintenance and operations, we're seeing close to no change. However, there was a lot of change there. It just happened to work out that way. We have, we're using a lot less fuel oil in the elementary school because of our energy performance contract and the geothermal addition there. And we're using our electricity and our, you know, costs are, are down considerably. And I know Dave, David Spittle, our operations director, will report back on those savings, you know, as we see more throughout the year. But, and then we have increases in that category too. So, that, that's why we're seeing only a small or no change in, in central services. The curriculum development, building administrative support and resource officers, we're seeing a decrease there mainly due to just lower costs as far as the IPA for the copiers go and a little less curriculum development costs associated with BOSI's. The guidance, health services, pupil personnel and psychological services, you're seeing an increase there, about $119,000. That's the one additional clinician and natural contractual expenses that will drive that up. Instructional media, that's our technology for the district, all of the technology throughout the district, all of our desktops, laptops, support for those through the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center. We actually have a decrease there because the cost for the laptops, as I said and mentioned again, were in the debt service line. So, we're seeing a decrease there. It would normally be about, I would say, about $250,000 increase because the cost for technology is ever-increasing. Athletics, we're seeing a small decrease, $15,000. Business office, finance, bidding and auditing, a small increase of $6,000 over last year. And property and liability insurance, BOSI services for security and administrative costs, we're seeing an increase there, mostly due to, the $54,000 is mostly due to, I would say, our security, added security services that we've, that we've added. And going through BOSI's though, for them, will definitely give us aid on those services next year. So, even though there's an increase, we will see aid coming back on that. Central administration, superintendent, district's office, we see a decrease of $13,000. And human resources, public information and legal services, we're seeing a decrease of $22,000. So, overall, our budget-to-budget 0.75% increase, under 1% or $385,000 on a $51 million. on a 51 million dollar budget. I would say it's a very small increase overall from year to year. So this is one of the slides that I added, and I thought it was important to mention these things. So, you know, what is our fiscal and programmatic accountability? How are, you know, how does our budget really take a look at that? And I wanted to make mention that our taxes have remained below the allowable tax cap since 2012. And over the past five years, the tax levy change average is under 1 percent or 0.67 percent. The, we've been able to maintain quality programs with a five-year average budget-to-budget change of just 1.43 percent. Our outcomes continue to show positive student achievement. We've been able to preserve and protect our student programs. And we've had increased learning opportunities that have enhanced, enhanced the curriculum for all grades, K through 12. And we have a tax cap compliant budget that has provided homeowners with an annual tax credit as well as being able to participate in the STAR program. So these are, these are the reasons that we're able to be accountable for our fiscal and programmatic changes in our budgets from year to year. And I thought that they were definitely mentionable. Our summary for 2019-20 budget, we'll, we'll see a 0.75 percent change, under 1 percent, 385,000. The budget includes less reliance on fund balance. And just to give you some facts regarding the tax levy, so an average assessed home in Putnam County is about 374,000 dollars. Based on that information, the tax change or tax 1.99 percent change is equivalent to about 195 dollars on an average home or 52 cents per thousand dollars of assessment. And I just want to mention the tax cap compliant budget, once again, you know, affords homeowners a refund on their school taxes either in the form of a school tax credit or the STAR program and the tax refund check. They usually get that in the fall. And there's a lot of information online regarding assessed values and exemptions. And it's important for people to look into them and to know what they're entitled to as far as their assessments go. There's information on our website. There's a website here, tax.ny.gov, that you can get a whole host of information on STAR program for basic STAR and enhanced. And the rules are changing constantly, so it's very important that people go on there, look at those rules and make sure that they've applied for everything that they're entitled to. It helps. And then I wanted to go over what a contingent budget is. I didn't talk about this last time, but when a, when a school budget has the possibility of getting defeated, we lose our ability to maintain our programs. We lose the ability to have the status quo and programs and services that are currently available. In our district, a contingent budget would mean that we would have to make cuts of 732,000 dollars. And that's the difference between last year's tax levy and this year's tax levy because that's how it works. There's a lot more information that you can find online if you look up contingency budgets in New York State, but this is basically what it comes down to. So what would this mean for districts as far as programs and/or services? So obviously, it's going to take away from student achievement and because we could have cuts in any of these areas. And these are just things that I came up with equalling this amount of money. It could be any combination. It could be other things in addition to these things. So what that equates to, that 732,000 dollars is 8.3 teaching positions or 14 teaching assistants, 10 miscellaneous clerical staff positions, 10, 10 custodial staff, an entire, probably our entire custodial staff. I don't know if there's 10 or there's 12 or, but athletic programs could be diminished. We could eliminate professional development and new learning opportunities and/or eliminate supplies and materials for students, teachers, athletes and things like of that nature. So 732,000 dollars is not something that we could take part of. It would have to be that whole amount, and it could amount to any of the combination of these things. And you could see how it could hurt the program if contingency had to take place. So I urge people to get out and vote on May 21st. That will be the day that the district will hold its annual budget vote from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM at the Putnam Valley Elementary School. Voters can obtain absentee ballots for the budget vote. They can register. There's nights coming up if you go to our website, www.pvcsd.org. There is a newsletter that is currently a work in progress. We will be having an online newsletter and also a mailed newsletter that's, I believe, will be two pages coming out right prior to the budget with our budget notice included. And tonight, at each office in the district, we have, actually, just at the business office now, until the budget gets adopted, we have a line-by-line proposed budget available, either online on our website or in the district office. If anyone would like one, there's one here tonight also. And if anyone has any questions or concerns, they should feel free to call my office anytime. Number is there. And my email is jfigarilla@pvcsd.org. I have a little video I want to share. It was prepared by the Capital Region Bosse's, and it's, it's available on YouTube. It's a quick, two-minute video, and I thought it really tells people the story about budget development in a, in a nice way. Okay. Let's see. We have to.
Did you see that bus?
I--
Oh, there's another one. These buses, like everything and everyone that make education possible in your community, are funded by your school district's budget. School budget is just a quick way to say what it costs to educate students. More than 70 percent of New York's school budgets are used to cover the salaries and benefits of school employees, the teachers, school aides, counselors, nurses, cleaners, mechanics, secretaries, administrators, coaches and bus drivers who care for students and make the school day happen. The budget also pays for the desk a student sits at, the book she reads, the classroom he learns in, the field she plays on, the device he uses for research, the test tube he studies, the music she reads, and yes, the fuel that gets her bus home at night. School must prepare students to compete for tomorrow's jobs with more innovative technology, real-world projects and individualized attention. There's also funding to meet state and federal rules and regulations to train staff to provide for student safety and to fund other priorities. Just like a household budget, the expenses, the money going out, must be covered by the money coming in. Most money for New York schools comes from two key sources, state aid and local property taxes. Federal aid accounts for less than 5 percent of school funding. The state provides for a little more than 40 percent. That leaves half of the pie to be filled by local sources such as the tax levy. This is how communities fund their local schools. It's an investment that pays off with an educated workforce, more vibrant local communities and a stronger economy. As they work on school budgets each year, school board members carefully consider many factors, including the skills students need to succeed in future jobs, the cost of school programs, state funding, and how much support local taxpayers can afford. Ultimately, voters have the final say on school budgets when they head to the polls in May. To learn more before you cast your vote, check your local school district website or stop by a school board meeting. After all, the school budget directly affects your community, and gathering your input is an important part of the process.
It's cute.
So Jill, the one thing that's not right in there for us is the percent of state aid that is our budget. Our budget is more like 20 percent as opposed to 40 percent.
20 percent, about 20 to 25 percent depending on the year, and about 70 to 75 percent is actually--
Unit team needs to get--
Sorry, is actually school taxes and local share of revenues. Yes.
Things done.
That 40 percent represents kind of more of the upstate Capitol District area.
Yeah, it probably is more of a statewide average than it-- Is a local average. So yes, you're correct. Does anybody else have any questions regarding--
I asked, we're adopting the budget, two meetings from now, I believe?
Yes, there's one more meeting.
Next meeting.
Oh, the 11th of April? Yeah, it is at the next meeting. I'm sorry. So that's the plan, to adopt it at the next meeting, and then--
Because we have to get the newsletter.
So if anyone on the board does, because I have a couple of questions. I don't want to throw them out, like about specific additions in that 3.4. I'll speak to people. I'll give you a quick call tomorrow. But we would have time before, our next meeting would be when we adopt.
Sure.
And if we have to, we have the next meeting. There's some insurance. We prefer not.
Right.
Because we do want--
Right. It just, it matters for a number of reasons, you know, filing budget notices with the state and also getting the newsletter out. When the numbers become final, then we can publish that, you know. So, but there is time. Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I liked the little video.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to open it up to public contribution on any of the, no, 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 not yet.
You didn't get to the D yet.
Not yet. Okay. We do not have student reports. We did the PTA curriculum report.
So I'll be really quick. I just wanted to provide a quick update. Mrs. Podesta and myself met with some of our colleagues at Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's to talk about what we think is going to be a really exciting pilot. We're actually going to start as early as this spring where Bosse's has partnered with a teacher and teaching assistants who are fluent in Mandarin to push into our kindergarten classrooms. And they're going to do some lessons, teach the students not just the language, but as well as the culture as well. And it'll be something that's going to continue throughout next school year as a survey. So we're going to work out a schedule, but maybe one day a week, a teaching assistant will be in Putnam Valley. They'll circulate around the five sections of kindergarten, and they'll work with the students doing some fun lessons and activities aligned to the kindergarten curriculum and standards. So we're not sort of stopping instruction for this to happen, but offering the students both some exposure to the Mandarin language as well as the culture. And it's something that we're going to evaluate at the end of next school year to see, is there a feasibility in moving forward in the same type of model? Do we have enough interest to move forward with a more immersive model where students really receive a bilingual exposure or bilingual opportunity? And there's a tremendous amount of research that supports exposure to a second language at a young age without there being any detriment or any negative effects to their ability to master their primary language as well as all the subjects and content in hand. And we think it's a really exciting thing that we're going to try out. Financially, there's really no exposure for us for this pilot phase. It's really going to be supported through Bosse's. We could be a leader in the area of doing this. And it offers a great segue to what is a Mandarin program that's available to our students beginning in the middle school. So I just wanted to provide that quick update. Our teachers are on board. They're really excited. We'll have a couple of opportunities for the teachers to meet the teaching assistant and have some sort of sample lessons this spring. And really throughout next year will be our opportunity to sort of see how well it works out.
And that's fully supported by Bosse's for the first year for the pilot? That's great.
Correct.
Fab.
So, you know, just a segue, and I'm really, I think it was really great of Bosse's to take it on as a, they're supporting it financially and for us to be a leader in this area and seen that way. The other, the other area that we're seen as a leader in is the Science 21, and our teachers are actually featured in their videos and the work they're doing with science at the elementary school, which makes the facilities project so, you know, so positive in terms of providing more science facilities at our, at our elementary school. So I, I'd like to mention the congratulations to Dr. Entieri again and to the faculty at the high school. We, we have let people know, but not officially through this, at a board meeting, the fact that we did receive the authorization, which is an honor for the school. And we received congratulations for this accomplishment. It's been two years of a tremendous amount of training and work, and the teachers are fully on board and passionate about, about this program. And it's a great opportunity for our students.
International baccalaureate.
Yes, the international baccalaureate. And we become an IB world school, offering the diploma program. And we have an inclusive project in mind so that all students have an opportunity to take international baccalaureate programs, classes. And the focus of this, of course, is an international perspective and an opportunity for our students to become successful in a world where things have changed considerably in terms of the economics and what is available to them through this global community that they're part of. They actually have their work assessed through professors and others throughout the world in terms of the work that they're doing. So it's, it's a completely different approach to, to education in a very positive way. I'd like to just give a congratulations to the Destination Imagination teams and to our parents and volunteers involved in the program, Liz Broas and Sheila, Sheila Kumas this year, having a team that has been, again, these, these are tremendous. I know Barbara was always involved in these, in these programs.
Yeah, I appraise.
And these are the creative opportunities for our students. And it really is a kind of a precursor to what they do in science research. They're learning how to think critically and how to develop a project and, and complete the project. I also--
When we were talking about the esports program, I was kind of, it's along the same line of finding like-minded peers and creating opportunities and teams.
So I'd just like to show a few photos. Oh, actually--
Probably best if I do them.
Why don't you do them? Yes, that's great. But today at the Mandarin program at our middle school, one of the teachers who is usually seen by, you know, through distance learning actually visited the school. And I went up to see her working with the students. And again, it is really amazing how much these students have learned in the two years. They're able to speak. They're able to write. They're able to read. And it is, the capacity of students, once they're given something that is challenging and that they, they actually enjoy doing, they can do amazing things. And to go up there and see them working was really quite, quite a thrill. I think there's another. Maybe there's another, but maybe not. Yeah, that's the same. Yeah, okay. But I, you know, I went around to the different groups and saw the students working with her and, and on their own. I also wanted to mention the, the play, the Wizard of Oz, which, you know, Miss Doherty was there and Miss Palmly was there, Miss Ruffo, Dr. Luft. We got to see the, the initial presentation today, the dress rehearsal really. And it was, it's, again, it's so charming and so poignant to see the children up there and to have four Dorothy's and two scarecrows and an incredible lion. And the new sound system that we have there really makes it work very, very well. And again, these are the special things. Oh, this is the other Mandarin picture, just showing the students with their work and so on. But again, our theater program, elementary, middle, high school is, it's pretty wonderful.
They were eight and nine-year-olds, so still mind-boggling.
And, and really brings tears to your eyes, the, the work that they're doing.
I just want to thank Maddie Cal, Madeline Calhoun and Chrissy Phillips. This is their 10th show. And they, they started with the Wizard of Oz, and they did exactly 10 years ago or nine years ago, actually.
There were two people that were from the science research in the running today that were in that production.
And, and what's wonderful, too, is you see the high school students. They're there to help with all the tech work, and they're excited about it.
And there were actually a couple of alumni on spring break that were helping behind the scenes who were also in the show. So it really, again, extends that community.
It's a full community project. And just to, to speak a moment about another area where we're connected like that is the, the science fair at the elementary school. And I have some, just some photos, but the point is, I have a list of students. They're going to get a certificate tomorrow. presentation today, the, the dress rehearsal really, and it was, it's again, it's so charming and so poignant to see the children up there and to have four Dorothys and two scarecrows and an incredible lion. And the new sound system that we have there really makes it work very, very well. And again, these are the special things, oh, this is the other Mandarin picture, just showing the students with their work and, and so on. But again, our theater program, elementary, middle, high school is, is pretty.
If they were eight and nine-year-olds, it's still mind-boggling.
And, and really brings tears to your eyes, the, the work that they're doing.
I just want to thank Maddie Calhoun, Madeline Calhoun and Chrissy Phillips, this is their 10th show. And they, they started with the Wizard of Oz, and they did exactly 10 years ago, or nine years ago, actually.
There were two people that were from the science research in the running today that were in that production.
And, and what's wonderful too, is you see the high school students.
They're helping.
They're there to help with all the tech work, and they're excited about it.
And there were actually a couple of alumni on spring break that were helping behind the scenes, who were also in the show, so it really, again, extends that community.
It's a full community project. And just to, to, to speak a moment about another area where we're connected like that is the, the science fair at the elementary school. And I have some, just some photos, but the point is, I have a list of students, they're going to get a certificate tomorrow. At the high school, we're going to give the certificates there. But these are the members of the National Science Honor Society who, who go over there to the elementary school regularly to help the students with their projects, and really focus them on now, on some very clear rules and sort of protocols for developing a project that can then lead them in that direction. And this year, Sarah Broas in particular has been involved with the students in, in encouraging them to go to the Junior Science Fair, which is the Westchester Fair. So I think it's 12 of the students, or I think 12 of them, 12 of them are going over there, out of the 42 going over to that. So these are ways that we really connect. So I just want to read their names of the students who've been so active as mentors. Sarah Nabi, Megan Borchik, Sarah Broas, Gianna Carlin, Caitlin Cohen, Bethany Dolan, Amnia Algendi, Leah Frankel, Justine Fritz, Sonia Garcia, that's our own Sonia from the board, Lily Clergeson, Kimberly Hindman, Matthew Latavick, Sophia Lord, Karina Materano, Chiara Baginti, Catherine McNamara, Alexandra Moore, Alexandria Moore, Jessica Here, Una Park, Alex Pamanis, Dora Rippon, Carly Rojas, Ryan Soto, Jenna Statin and Lucas Adrema. And really, this makes for the circle, you know, coming around when you have the students helping, helping them. And there was one other thing that I wanted to mention, because, you know, several years ago with the Common Core, we started to use more nonfiction in our classrooms and bring together science and reading and English. And I, I was in Ms. Boyd's class today, and these were second graders reading at a really high level, reading science and presenting. This was, they, they had created these presentations and they were presenting to parents, the parents were there. And the level of the work they had done on this nonfiction was quite remarkable, and they love learning about snakes and reptiles and so on. But it's connecting the science and the reading and understanding what the Common Core is about, because they would, they were using tables of contents, they were learning about glossaries, you know, the definitions, and, you know, some of the more, the protocols of writing a research paper in your second grade class, so it was very fun. That's it.
And Mr. Smith and Mrs. Palmer, were you both fourth grade science teachers and certainly supervised a number of science fairs in the day?
Oh, yeah, a lot of science fairs.
But this is the, the high school students coming over. Both when they come, I don't know if they're still doing it, the National Honor Society used to come over and do experiments with your class twice a year, they really look up to these young adults and, and take them at their word. And these high school students are really encouraging them in a way that as a teacher was harder to do, to use the scientific method, to understand research, to, to think about using data to, to prove or disprove your hypothesis. And, and it just, it comes over in a different way from them, and it's really great that they, they do that. Now we need to bridge, set this to the middle school, because we're doing it at the elementary school and the high school, but I don't want to lose them in between.
They have a capstone project there, which is a research elective, so they are starting to look at ways to bring that process.
The 33 projects at the elementary school are just unbelievable, from solar to looking at gnar walls, to looking at just aeration in water, looking at sound going through different substances from vinegar to water, looking at copper coins and what happens to them, looking at what makes a boat float, and how can you improve it, looking at crystals, looking at tooth decay, looking at lava in various types, looking at bubbles, what makes a stronger bubble, so it was hard to do that too, electronic circuitry, sound waves, potato circuitry, electricity coming out of a potato, which was dumbfounded, you know. Again, I was.
Could they answer your questions, Mr. Cohen?
Oh, I won't even get into it.
Ten, they're ten. Yeah, I know, it's pretty amazing.
No volcanoes?
Yes, there was.
Oh, whether?
Yes, there was volcanoes.
Stop hating on the volcanoes.
Yeah, Mr. Kai, a student named Kylie, I don't know his last name, Kylie had volcanoes. There might have been others, but Kylie had volcanoes.
Okay, excellent.
I just like that the high school students, they come in with, we can't compete, because those high school students come in with celebrity status. And seeing the students interact with the high school students and just being wowed by their presence in the room is something that's pretty amazing to see.
Just to watch how they interacted that day, as you were coming around talking to the students, and then when you would leave, you know, you see the two interacting, it was like, you know, it wasn't a teacher environment, it was just like, it was just unbelievable.
Like, I could be like that. Yeah, that's really great.
But next year, we have to do it separate by a month, so I don't get embarrassed four days apart that I know so little.
That's a very good point, Mr. Smith, and we need to protect the ego of the board members.
That's, I do have to point out that I did sign up one fourth grade student for science research after she presented her project to me by, she had index cards in her hand that she wrote out her speech and didn't glance at them. And for 10 minutes took me through a whole rundown of every aspect of her experiment, what she did, why she did it, and what she found out. So I told her that I was signing her up for science research.
Do we have any science openings?
And one of the strange things is if you ask the question and you brought it, they didn't have to go back and look at their notes. They answered your question, and they can, it was just brilliant.
It is, it's really mind-boggling, and it is so pride-inducing, it's so exciting. Did I ask about the public comment?
Not yet.
I'd like to ask public for contribution in the existing agenda items, oh, I tried before.
Right.
This is only the one public person out there.
Okay, so we will then now move into new business, of which there are just few, and can I ask you, Ms. Ferrer, to start with number one?
Resolve to approve and authorize the superintendent of schools to enter into the 2019-2020 Putnam County Real Property Tax Service Contract as per document number 14319 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting. Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby amends Jamie Manyere's Hannigan's probationary appointment resolution that was acted upon at the July 8, 2016 Board of Education meeting to reflect that Ms. Hannigan shall serve a four-year probationary term as an elementary teacher in the elementary tenure area commencing on August 31, 2016 and terminating on August 30, 2020. In order to be eligible for appointment to tenure, said employee must receive at least three APPR ratings of effective or highly effective during the four-year probationary term and may not receive an ineffective rating in the final year of probation.
Second. Questions or comments?
I just want to point out, just a simple, originally she was put into the remedial reading tenure area, and that was incorrect, it didn't match what her responsibilities were or what she thought she was teaching, so it's just a correction, she's aware, everyone's aware, this is the certification which she's been teaching under since arriving.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number three.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby amends the dates in Crystal Michael's probationary appointment resolution that was acted upon at the May 23, 2018 Board of Education meeting to reflect that Ms. Michaels shall serve a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant in the teaching assistant tenure area commencing on May 8, 2018 and terminating on May 27, 2022, and in accordance with PVCSD policy 9250.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four. No, we're done.
We're skipping number four.
Oh, we're, I forgot, okay. Then let's move on to the consent agenda.
Be resolved to approve consent agenda items 2 through 12 as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments?
We're approving salary increases for the four sports teams and coaches that went on to additional postseason activities, from wrestling to the basketball teams, those are the main ones that we're approving, and the cheerleaders. And we're approving CSE, CPSE placements, we're approving an unpaid leave for an aide who's going to be out of the country, we're approving a leave and absence for a teacher for the rest of the semester, and that's without pay. We're approving a payment to narrative professional development for providing help during our superintendent's conference days. We're approving a contract with Carafan for one of our students who are attending there. We're approving the document which lists the costs for all the services that we plan to use at Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse for 2019-2020, and it goes on for like four pages, lists each of the items that we'll have from students to other services that Bosse supplies. We're proving the substitute tutor list, we're proving an overnight trip for the STEM robotics competition this coming weekend at Rockland Community College. We're proving a contract with CBIZ validation group, and they're going to look at our fixed capital assets, and we're proving days without pay for a staff member who's about to have a baby.
And I'm going to abstain from the vote because my daughter's on the substitute list.
So all in favor?
Aye.
And one abstain. Okay. Like to open it up to public comment or anything from the board? And I do have one thing, I was approached by a community member, I think there were some emails to the board regarding, as the public may know, we currently have a policy that seniors are allowed to drive to school, and they are allowed to leave at the end of their scheduled day. They can't go and come back, but they, you know, they can't, like if they have two periods free in the middle of the day, they can't leave and come back and leave, but they can leave at the end of their scheduled day.
With signed parent permission.
Yes. And there was, there has been a request to explore, by a parent, to explore that, extending that to juniors. The, the parents' concern is that the block schedule, because you're not having every subject every day, has said that some students are finished for their school day at 10:30. And she was informed appropriate so by both principal and Dr. Wills, that that is a board policy of whether you have an open campus and a not-open campus. I was in a district where this was a one-year project, conversation, and I know that the trend generally is that juniors, that this is a senior-only privilege. But I did say that I would bring it up for an initial conversation among the board members, see if anybody feels we should explore, for any reason, feasibility, parking is a factor, free time at home is a factor, safety and supervision, encouragement of rigor, and all of these are, are factors that would need to be explored and discussed. And is there any interest to ask our administrators to go ahead and do that, or are we content with where things are? Where, where do we stand? I thought we could at least have an initial conversation, since the, the parent has been told it would be ultimately a board decision.
Well, I, I would hate to add more parking, just as we're initiating a construction project where they're going to have to have, I mean, I, I mean, like, you would have to put it off at least two years to me, you know, I mean, just for the feasibility. I, I know that this district is respectful of students, and if there was an issue, they would consider, you know, special allowances, you know, on a case-by-case basis. But I think as a policy, it's, I think it's a good policy, and we should be encouraging our juniors and seniors to take as many courses as they can, rather than leaving.
Right. I would agree.
I would not give another job to our principals right now. I think they're doing a wonderful job, and they're kind of busy, so.
I'm sure that our administrators are always reviewing this, this as many as well as other rules on a, on a constant basis, at all times and all, all requests, I'm sure they're reviewing these things. I'm not fully informed on this specific case.
No, it really was, I brought it up on a general basis.
But I will say, but I will say that I know that we've done a lot of things in past years with setting a priority of having students here. Later school opening meant to encourage students to be here and, and be here on time, rotating schedule, there are first period classes rotate at times so that people are here and, and present, and I do encourage the rigor of having more academics rather than less, and so, whereas I, I would leave it up to administrators to analyze specific details about these things, those are things that guide my thinking. However, I, I would, I would trust the administration with making a judgment on these things myself.
As a guiding principle, though, I mean, not just our juniors, but our seniors as well, but particularly our juniors, it's a very incredibly important year, as well to maximize your learning opportunities, take as many classes as works for you.
Want to maximize their educational experience, that's the critical place.
And encourage that rigor and high expectations, so.
But if, if, if a student has to go somewhere, can the parent pick them up?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
This is a matter of the parent maybe not being able to, maybe having to leave work and wanting the student to be able to go home and then come back for practice, you know, for, for the afternoon, so.
Once again, I, I would leave that up to the administrator to, to make an informed decision.
In terms of any case-by-case needs. Okay, that's great, and if, if anybody is listening and would like, you're always welcome to come and bring up anything of public contribution, and we will just say to Dr. Intriari that on a case-by-case basis, make whatever decisions seem appropriate and in the best interest of our students. Any, you have something?
Sorry, I had two things, and I don't know if these are things that we want to talk about now or, or have them at a different time, because there, there was possible discussion about tuition, but it didn't come up in exploring tuition-paying students. If that's going to be something we want to talk about now or put that on another future agenda, and there were, there was communication, we talked in the last board meeting that we'd have MT, whatever the name of the bus company, picking up starting April 1st, but I think that changed, so I just wanted to get an update on where that stands.
So, so for the transportation standpoint is, there is no, no deal in place to begin on April 1st, the district is moving forward with an RFP process that would, to start, begin July 1st, so that would be an open bidding process for companies to respond to our RFP to begin a new transportation contract in July. We're still exploring the feasibility of having a sort of a signature, sign over of the existing contract, but we don't have, we don't know if that'll happen or not, so we need to make sure we have our ducks in a row for next summer. So the RFP is out, and we'll be accepting responses, we're not obligated to go with any of them, we, we still would have the right to continue at our existing company, and we would still continue to explore the possibility of having that contract signed over, but none of that has taken place yet.
And with regard to the tuition payment possibility, that would need to be explored as far as, you know, the, the protocols for actually making that happen, but that emerged from a discussion of the revenue issues that we have now with so little aid coming from the state, and even the discussion we had with the gentleman last, at the last board meeting, who was interested in how we could find other ways. There are districts that do accept tuition students, usually from school districts, but not always. There are options to accept tuition-paying students from parents, and, you know, my thoughts on this matter were that we now have some exceptional programs to offer at our high school, and, you know, with the new IB program, and actually, Dr. Intriari had mentioned this to me as well. With this opportunity, we might be able to invite, and we don't, you know, we don't have increasing enrollment, I mean, if you were in a situation where you had increasing enrollment, that would be something else, but to preserve program. But to preserve program, to preserve staff, and to create a revenue source that would offset some of the expenditures, it seemed to me that it would be a good suggestion that the board could consider at some point, perhaps during the course of of next year, to plan this, you know, it has to be planned. It has to be, you develop a marketing tool, ways to let people know what you have. But it was just a seed of an idea that could, you know, I mean, there are some districts that earn as much as a million dollars a year through tuition payments. And I'm not saying that's where, you know, but I'm just saying that if we're looking at everything and we are providing these great programs which have become, which we believe will be very successful, some of them are already successful, there may be other districts who, or other parents in, from other districts, who would like to participate.
Especially as we get into the leaner years, class size wise in the high school in the next couple of years.
Yeah, that's that's, that was the thought.
So yeah, it's just my two cents on this topic because this is something that I've been thinking about myself, is I think we have an amazing program. And I think it rivals the education that maybe area students are getting at, attending private schools. And I think by affording this opportunity, it certainly would improve our revenue. It would offset what we know is going to be a sort of a steadily declining enrollment at the high school level over the next 10 years. And it really provides us the opportunity, even just to create that marketing material is a way for us to sort of brand ourselves, to celebrate everything that we've achieved and to put ourselves out there to say, yes, we're open for business. And this is a school that's deserving of your consideration. If you're looking for somewhere, if you're looking at tuition, your child in somewhere, now are we going to get a million dollars of it? No. But I think, I just think even the creation of that marketing material speaks volumes to who we are as a district. So I think it's something that I would love to explore.
I agree 100%. I just, the caveat could be, cannot be an additional burden on our taxpayer in any way and only a support, so.
So you always are looking at the tipping point with your staff and so on.
Because I remember, you know, we we still, every April, we have.
The moratorium on the staff.
The moratorium on students, children of staff attending. And we had done that because it was right when our budgeting concerns were concerned.
That we weren't receiving tuition.
No, there's no tuition and it was pushing over the.
But I've also heard from staff that are curious as to whether we'd ever open that conversation again and allow them to tuition their students, their children in because then their students would be in the town where they were teaching. They would feel better about staying late and doing extra things. And would we consider a tuition program for, you know, starting at the elementary school for?
Well, right now, we do have, for the current children of current staff that have some children in district, if they wanted to have other children in district, they could pay tuition.
But the children that are already.
It was the new ones, it was close for new ones.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's, I think it's certainly if we're opening up to tuition, we're going to allow our staff the the opportunity, but.
But nothing that causes an addition of staff.
Right. Or additional costs.
It could cause additional staff if numbers come in. But we would be having the income coming in.
Yes, if we had the income.
The the net has to be a profit rather than a loss for our taxpayers, so. Okay. Anything else from anybody on the board? Then at this time, I would like to resolve to convene an executive sessions for 31 matters of the employment history of 31 particular people and one matter of possible litigation, after which time no further business will be conducted.
And one issue of collective bargaining under the Taylor Law.
Sorry, I forgot about that. One issue of collective bargaining under the Taylor Law.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone, and happy spring.